I would go ahead and call our Bryan County Board of Commissioners, March fourteenth meeting to order. If you would, please stand. We're gonna ask Brad Moore if he would lead us in. Thank you, sir.
I was kind and gracious to talk to you. Thank you for this day. We thank you for all your blessings you bestowed upon us. And Lord, we ask you to give us divine wisdom and knowledge tonight, Lord, and be with these commissioners as they make vital decisions for the community. Lord, we just ask that you be with each and every decision made, Lord, and let it be in your will, Lord, not in ours. All these things, we ask you in holy righteous name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll join me for a pledge of allegiance right here. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. Okay, if we get bigger and bigger crowds, community grows, we do wanna thank everybody for coming tonight. First up, we just need approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve the agenda as submitted, removing items one, two, and three from the community development public hearing. This was asked to be removed at the request of the folks applying for this.
All right. Second on that.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. All right, we need the approval for our February twenty-three minute meeting minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the February twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, we need a motion to close this meeting and open up our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we close this regular meeting and we open a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, first up, we have those three items that got, they deferred that until May. Is anybody here wish to speak on those three items?
Same what they were.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I'll read them to you. It's the first city associate, second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map. Four acres in the, then Bridgeston Blind, Bryan Oaks Conference of Plan Amendment, North Bryan. Future land use map, and the Bridgeston, Bryan Oaks, second reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map. That's that area down by Parkers. So if anybody's here, 'cause if you came to speak, we'll let you speak. Nobody here to speak? All right, thank you. Excuse me? Yes, sir, if you wanna come up, we'll give you four minutes to say what you wanna say. This is gonna be deferred till May, but since you did make the effort to come, just state your name for the record, sir, and give you four minutes.
My name is Rick Wilson. I live at four forty-five Deer Run Road. And I wanna welcome the commissioners and the board here on behalf of the residents here in Bryan County. As you well know, due to the recent growth that we have, the industrial growth, it's quite changed my neighborhood from being a quiet residential to an industrial neighborhood. To be associated with trucks coming down my road that do not belong. We have a handicapped child that lives in our neighborhood. We have a cul-de-sac there, but that does not matter. I've had everything, if you'll excuse the expression, lot lizard show up my door that I did not have before. I've had people break into my cars outside in my driveway that I did not have problems with before. I have an enormous noise from the trucks that are behind me, as well as at the end of the street. The trucks now will run over you, as well as my children and family, when they're trying to leave in and out of Deer Run Road. I'm sure that the commissioners cannot afford to put up a traffic light for a few people that live on Deer Run Road. So I'm asking the board and the county if they will consider changing our properties to an industrial zone so we can sell our properties and get a decent price and maybe find a quiet, decent place in a community once again, and we could resume our lives as we once had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wanna speak on those three items? Okay, all right, our first item up, or fourth item now, is the Silverman Land Holdings LLC approval for the master plan for the Conley-Davis track, North IDR Properties parcel zero-two-eight-zero-three-one and zero-three-three-dash-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one. This is our first meeting, so everybody knows in this building, so the IT folks don't have it just like we're working through it.
Okay, so this item, this is the public hearing for the master plan consideration for the Conley and Davis tracks. So as you all know, the Conley and Davis tracks were rezoned for industrial use back in January of twenty-twenty-one. A condition of that rezoning was that they do come back to the Board of Commissioners with their master conceptual plan for consideration and approval. And so that is the purpose of this public hearing this evening. Now, we do have some staff recommendations attached to our recommendation for approval. And I'll go over those, but I would first like to just go over the master plan and touch on some of the highlights and important points of what they're presenting. Now, just for, you know, just to get everybody oriented, this is the Conley-Davis tracks here. They do have that frontage on Eldora Road. And this is the conceptual master plan that is being presented for your approval this evening. Now, from this master plan, we see a total of seven proposed buildings. The total square footage for these seven buildings amounts to approximately two-point-six million square feet. Included in this request is a request to increase and allow the parking at one-thousand-two-hundred-and-two spaces. And I do wanna note that that is just for standard employee parking spaces. That does not include the truck courts. The master plan also shows two access points, providing access onto Eldora Road. Based off of a traffic study that was completed, looking at those access points, it's expected that the site's going to generate a total of four-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-four daily trips, of which approximately one-thousand-four-hundred are anticipated to be truck trips. And with that trip generation in the two access points, the review of the traffic impact assessment did recommend that they provide for both right and left turn lanes into those two access points. So that is shown on this conceptual plan as well. And now, regarding any staff recommendation, we are recommending approval as the general layout of the site does comply with the I-two zoning district. But we do have a couple of conditions that we've recommended as well. Now, the first condition relates to a possible abandonment of Willie Road. The conceptual plan will show that Willie Road is an existing county right-of-way. It previously only provided access to these tracks. And the current applicant is not planning to continue using that access in order to serve the tract. So the first condition relates to them needing to make a formal request for the abandonment of Willie Road. Now, I do think it was brought up maybe in a prior meeting, that the ownership of that road, before it was a county right-of-way, is something that would have to be assessed through that abandonment. And so it's not known at this time, if abandoned, what property owner would get what portion of that. And so we just wanna make clear that with the approval of a concept plan this evening, that no decisions are being made about that specifically. The applicant will have to come back at a later time, and we would complete that abandonment process. Now, the second condition that we have here is regarding a traffic improvement agreement that will need to be entered into. And we're tying this to having to be entered into prior to any land disturbing permits being issued. The third condition that we have here is related specifically to Eldora Road. As the county is currently studying the improvements to Eldora Road, the condition reads that this development will be required to mitigate impacts to Eldora Road based on the final study, and will be required to pay their proportionate share to the improvements for the Highway eighty-two-eighty intersection. And then the fourth condition that we have on here is related to their request for the parking at those one-thousand-two-hundred-and-two standard parking spaces. Now, for this, the Unified Development Ordinance sets a maximum amount of parking that should be permitted. And for this development, based off of the square footage, they would only be a maximum allowed at five-hundred-and-seventy-four spaces. So what they're asking for this evening doubles what we would ordinarily permit. Since we do not have a specific developer, or since the applicant does not have a specific developer for this project at this time, staff is recommending that we not go ahead and approve that blanket increase with this concept plan, but rather, we hold them to this recommended condition that would require them to come back when they have the developers for those specific buildings, and we can get a little bit more justification and understanding of what increase is actually needed versus just allowing a blanket increase. So that is staff's recommendation. Again, we are recommending approval, subject to those four recommended conditions.
Okay, do you have any questions on this board? Anybody wish to speak? Is the applicant here or wish to speak? And then we'll take, if you'll come up and state your name, please, and speak, and we'll give you four minutes to speak on this. And then we'll take other folks who wanna speak, if there is any here.
Good evening, Scott Allison with Coleman Company. Amanda did a great job of explaining our master plan and the intent for the property as it's entitled. I did wanna address the, two things really, actually, as far as the abandonment of Willie Road. I know that there were some questions regarding that and setbacks and how that conveyance will occur. On our site plan, we've accommodated for kind of a worst-case scenario in that regard. So for instance, if after abandonment, the property's conveyed to the adjacent property owner, our setbacks, our buffers will be as shown on this plan from where our property line is now. So it would not impact that property any more or greater than what's indicated on the plan as far as the buffers and the setback. Additionally, in regards to the parking requests, we have provided a justification and understand that once a specific developer comes in and get further along with specific plans, that there would need to be a request, the formal request to the commission for the parking accommodation. But did wanna point out that, you know, what we have found in the market, you know, for these types of development, they were within the parameters of what we're seeing for these Class A-type spaces for the clients that we have in developments similar in the area. In discussions with staff, I know there were some questions about that, 'cause they've seen kind of a, I guess, a opposite end from some and from others, you know, in increase. What we're finding on these types of developments, that we do fall within those those market demand for Class A spec warehouse space, they're typically requirement of somewhere between one space per thousand square feet or one space per three thousand. When we fall within those parameters, it is obviously outside of your Unified Development Ordinance from parking regulations, and that will be an identified request at a later date. Also, did wanna mention specifically related to Eldora Road and the access. I know that the lifting, the condition of the zoning condition from that occurred, you know, late summer. It was a finding within our TIA that's now been approved, that Eldora Road with the trips that we're adding to it will operate at a level of service B. It's an acceptable level of service post our development. And after public hearing, I can answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
Oh, Mr. Allison, real quick, does the master plan have shown, does that show twelve hundred parking spaces?
Yes.
It does, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anybody wish to speak for or against, for this project or against? If you'd just come up, please, and state your name for the record, and we'll give you four minutes to speak.
I'm Deidre Williams. I own the property right on the corner of Willie Road.
I'm Deidre Williams, I own the property right on the corner of Willie Road.
This is my track right here, and their access road is right by my house.
Could you do that, could you do that on that one, that we can't see that, sorry.
This is my property right here, and the road is right there. So we're coming around on top of me.
But again, like this fellow said, at some point, we probably going to want to rezone ours too. I've talked to the neighbors all alone there, and all of them pretty much want to rezone theirs. I own half of Willie Road when they've made it. When they made it a county-maintained road, they just, you know, so anyhow, half of it should go back to our family. It is, I think, 10,000 square feet. Don't sound like much, but I would just like to have it back just to make sure that they don't encroach any further on us. All the setbacks are correct. And I have talked to Amanda, and she said that everything is taken from the other side of the road. So all the setbacks are correct. All I can say is go forward, bring on the trucks.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for, if you'd come up and state your name, please, and we'll give you four minutes.
My name is Patricia Wilson, and I actually live on the farther side of that same track. And I'm just speaking on behalf of myself and my neighbors, like my mother said, and Mr. Wilson. You know, we've spoke with them about potentially rezoning. But the rezoning process for a private property owner is extremely difficult. I've looked into it, I've looked at it, and unless you have a company working on your behalf to do certain things, it's very difficult. So what I'm asking for you to consider is a rezoning process for private property owners that would be a little simpler for us so that we can potentially move somewhere that's quieter, where we won't have to raise our children next to warehouses. We won't have to worry about our children potentially getting hit by a semi-truck because they can't stop fast enough because our bus stop is literally 200 feet from the entrance of that right-of-way. So I'm just asking that you consider it, just to make it a little bit simpler, because this has been painful enough as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, all right, we'll go to our next. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm neutral on this whole thing, I just have a couple of questions. My name is Starlee, I live at 1118 Eldora Road, and I sit directly in front of the Davis part of the track. I just want to know, I guess this is for the developers maybe, is there going to be a berm put in front of the road, separating the road from the buildings at all for sound, maybe?
Can someone come speak to what the frontage of that looks like?
Yes, ma'am. Two things that we try to do in the plan to accommodate for the neighboring properties. The buildings have been turned, so the, it's auto parking along this long stretch as opposed to trucks, so they're rear-loaded. And then what we've indicated on the plan is the required buffer per the Unified Development Ordinance, and it will have to meet the specifications of the county's ordinance as far as its planning.
Okay, don't go anywhere. What's the entrance going to be here along Eldora Road, where's the entrance at?
There's an access point here on this southern end with left turn in, with the left turn stacking and a right turn coming, so traffic can continue across. And then the other access point is on the north end.
Perfect.
What she's asking about is where the two access points were.
I'm just making sure it wasn't across the road for me, so I don't have to sit in that driveway for 30 minutes waiting to get home. And then the last thing, so the road study, I know that's still going on and everything, but are y'all going to widen Eldora Road at all? Is that what's going to happen?
I don't believe we have any plans right now to do that. We're going to, obviously, we will look at it as we grow here.
Okay, I just need to know because.
For the study.
Yeah, well, and that.
That comes with the study, okay. I was just making sure because it's pretty narrow down there, and I have a line of trees that kind of separate our house from the road, and I didn't know if my trees were going to be taken down because that's my, that's my safety net, so I was just making sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So if y'all want to get with him after the meeting and he can answer those questions for y'all, have some more discussion about that, and you had a.
No, I just, Scott, when we saw this a couple of months ago, it was just two buildings and less square footage, right, of warehouse space? Didn't we initially start out with just two buildings?
There was a master plan done back in the summer that was probably reimagined as part of the Eldora that indicated buildings on these options. What this is indicating is the potential for what we refer to as a maximum yield, almost like a worst-case scenario, not to put it that way. But this is, this is the most you could get on the site. When somebody comes in and develops it, there may be some modifications to this, but we couldn't see how there could be any more square footage to that, which in turn has a domino effect with more water usage, no more trucks.
So you're saying it may be less than this, but no worse than this, depending on how you're looking at it?
Yeah, I mean, the only way it could get, if you want to refer to it as worse, was they'd have to impact and pay a lot of money for wetland impact.
That's the maximum utilization of that piece of property.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to speak for or against, or?
Thank you, Scott.
All right, thank you. All right, next item up is item number five, Savannah Land Holdings Sketch Plaid for Waterways Parcel 16 and 17.
Yeah, so this is Hussey Gabel Engineering representing Savannah Land Holdings, requesting preliminary plaid approval for the Waterways Parcel 16 and 17 located in the Waterways Development. The plaid is for 201 single-family lots on about 94.5 acre portion of property. Staff and the plan, or staff is recommending approval with a couple of conditions. And at their February meeting, the Planning and Zoning Board also recommended approval with staff conditions, which are that the 911 Address Coordinator approve all road names prior to the recording of the final plaid and that the 911 Address Coordinator approve the final subdivision name so it doesn't get recorded as Waterways Parcel 16 and 17 and create confusion years down the road. And that's kind of what it looks like with it all laid out on the existing. It comes down off of Pulaski Drive from the Lakewood Phase 1 and 2, and kind of shows you on the Waterways Master Plan where it'll be at, and that's their plaid.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Anybody here from the public wish to speak for or against? All right, thank you, all right. Item number six is the Ronald Rivera Joker's Ink Tattoo Still Conditional Use Permit for a Tattoo Studio at 6320 Highway 17 South.
So this item is for a property that is located on Highway 17, Zone B2, and tattoo studios require conditional use of that zoning district. The applicant indicated their shop will be open Sunday as well as Tuesday through Saturday, but they are not planning to alter the site or the building. And they did provide all their public health approvals, which they've already obtained. And you can see the surrounding zoning there. So staff did find that the requirements for a tattoo studio were met and Planning and Zoning recommended approval as well. Any questions?
Any questions on that one? Anybody here wish to speak for or against? All right, thank you. Okay, the next one is the Richard Michelle Veal Groovy Grooming Conditional Use Permit for a Home Service Business Dog Grooming at 40 Alex Drive in Ellicott.
Yeah, so this is another, this is a home conditional use permit to operate a home pet grooming business in the Victoria Place subdivision. Staff found that it met the requirements for a home occupation business, and so did the Planning and Zoning Board also recommended approval. It's over in the Victoria Place subdivision off of Mack English Road. And staff took a site visit out at the home and found that overall it met the requirements needed for a home business.
Do we have anybody wish to speak for or against, or the applicant here? Would like, if you'd like to speak for, are you the applicant, ma'am?
Yeah, I am.
If you, if you, you would like to speak?
Yes.
So if you come up and just state your name for the record, please, and we'll give you four minutes to speak.
Howdy, first off, thanks for having me and taking the time to listen. I am Michelle Veal, I'm 40 Alex Drive, and this is my husband, Richard Veal. Just real quick things, I don't want to take up most of your time, because I know all of us wants to go home, but it's just going to be a small business with no more than three appointment-only animals coming in at a time. They'll call and make an appointment, schedule a day, they'll come in, do the dogs, and then I send them home. This is not a boarding facility, there was some confusion about that. This is a grooming where I style, clean the dogs, clip nails, just, it's like doing your hair, but the whole body for dogs. But, and that is going to be it. I just wanted to clear up any confusion of that right away. Do you have any questions about the facility or what I'm doing or any?
You may have a question.
You said three at a time, I think it was presented to us as three a day.
Three, yeah, three appointments, three a day, yeah.
Three a day appointments?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Not three appointments at one time?
Yeah, yeah, of course, yes.
And no overnight, I think that was.
No overnight, no dog will be leaving or entering my facility without proof of rabies, as is Georgia law. And no dog will be leaving without, or entering without having a lead or within a kennel, within a carrion kennel. So this, and that's, that's, that's pretty much it, that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
I would actually like to speak just briefly.
Yes, if you'd just state your name for the record again.
Richard Veal, 40 Alex Drive. So we have a few signatures from our surrounding neighbors. If you would like to see them some for, some against us, just the people we thought would be most affected. I know there was some concern from the HOA. After reviewing our covenants, it is against the covenants for maintenance of animals, I'm assuming that includes this. That being said, we reached out by email for some discourse and to receive a reply. However, I see they're here today, if there's any concerns they may have, or, you know, any conditions we can apply, reach out agreement on that front, we're more than willing to speak.
Okay.
And I just wanted to reiterate on that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against? If you'd just come up and state your name, ma'am, we'll give you four minutes also.
My name is Kimberly Harrington, I am the president of the HOA at Victoria Place and have been since 2015. The covenants does explicitly state that this type of business is not allowed in the neighborhood. My concern is not how the business is right now, but the growth of the business, because all businesses have the potential for growth and they add services. My concern is the animals that would be in the garage or on the property. We already are combating some issues in the neighborhood with animals already, and this would just be one additional issue that we would probably have to deal with later on down the road. So I don't have a problem with the business as is right now, what they're describing to you today. What my issue is looking at down the road, all businesses grow, they add services to what they already offer. So that's what my concern is, the animals getting out, which we've had some issues with that in the neighborhood. I'm the one that they call anytime a dog is running loose or cats, you know, doing whatever in the neighborhood. I'm accessible, so they call me, and that's my concern, is that it'll be an issue later on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll take a motion to close our public hearing and open our regular meeting back up to vote on these items, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Second. All in favor, say aye. We're back in our public meeting, and the first item up to vote on is the Silverman Land Holdings LLC approval of the master plan for the Conley Track, North IDR Properties. Take a motion on that one.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the Conley Davis Industrial Park Master Development Plan with the following conditions. Applicant will need to request formal abandonment of Willie Road as part of the abandonment process. The county will determine which property owners receive the conveyance of the abandoned area. Request to abandon application must be received prior to any land disturbance, building permits being issued. If the Board of Commissioners does not approve the abandonment, the applicant developer will need to submit updated information on minimum spacing requirements between curb cuts and Willie Road for review and approval. Two, a traffic improvement agreement will need to be entered into prior to any land disturbing permits being issued. Three, the county is currently studying improvements to Eldora Road. This development will be required to mitigate impacts to Eldora Road based on the final study and will be required to pay their proportionate share to the improvements for Highway 80/280. Any, for any increase in parking should be requested at the time a specific developer is identified for a building and justification that the parking is necessary to accommodate the use on a typical day can be provided.
I'll second that. Second, any discussion?
One question to Amanda. Condition number one, does that takes care of Ms. Williams's concern about the conveyance of property back to the landowner?
It does.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, we're down to item number five, which is the Land Holdings LLC Sketch Plaid for Waterways Parcels 16 and 17. Need a motion on that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the sketch plaid approval with the following conditions. That the 911 Address Coordinator shall approve all road names prior to the recording of the final plaid and that the 911 Address Coordinator shall approve the final subdivision name prior to the recording of the plaid.
I'll second.
Second, all right, any discussion on that one? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. We're down to item number six, the Ronald Rivera Joker's Tattoo Conditional Use Permit for a Tattoo Studio at 6320 Highway 17 South.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Conditional Use Permit for a Tattoo Studio located at 6320 Highway 17, parcel number 0471-103.
I'll second that. Second that, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, down to item number seven, Richard Michelle Veal Groovy Grooming Conditional Use Permit for Home Service Business Dog Grooming at 40 Alex Drive, Ellicott. Need a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Conditional Use Permit for a Dog Grooming Business for parcel number 0263-082.
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion?
One, one question, Mr. Chair. We're not here to give legal advice, but is it the case that the HOA still has their rights as the HOA inside of that neighborhood, regardless of the approval of this body?
Right. Can you refer to, hearing on that, yes?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, just to confirm, make your own money, you know?
That's right.
All right, I got a second on that. Any more discussion, okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, we're down to our community development, non-public hearing items. First up is Virginia's Bell, the first reading, there will be no action taken on this, but the first reading of ordinance to rezone 4.042 acres, parcel 024-013.
This is a non-public hearing item, the first reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map for a property at 2381 Bill Futch Road. Virginia's Bell is requesting to rezone about a four-acre portion of an approximately 21.9 acre tract from the A5 zoning district to the RR 2.5 zoning district. Applicant plans to subdivide the rezoned property from remaining acreage, both of which already contain an existing house. So gives you an idea of where it's at. And then the highlighted portion is the track being rezoned. Again, this is a first reading only. Again, this is a first reading only, so it will have public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Board next week on March twenty-first, back for a decision with the Board of Commissioners in April.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Nope. Okay, thank you, all right. Next up is the Johnny Young First Reading of an Ordinance to Rezone six point one-two Acres, parcel zero-six-zero-one dash one-two-three.
And so this is a first reading for rezoning at two-fifteen Fox Road. It's currently zoned RR one and they are asking for an A-five agricultural zoning in order to run a kennel on the property. This is the first reading, first public hearing will be March twenty-first with planning and zoning and then the second reading with you all on April eleventh. There's the surrounding zoning. Any questions on that one?
No questions on that? Nope. Okay, all right, thank you. And then next is up, this is the second reading of ordinance to amend chapter one-oh-four of the Code of Bryan County. Again, no action will be taken, this is a first reading, excuse me, second reading, there will be action taken.
There will be action, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Yes, this is second reading of the, of the ordinance amendment to the Derelict Property, which is chapter one-oh-four. No public hearings are required for this ordinance revision. During the twenty-twenty-two legislative session, the Georgia Legislature amended the state statute that allows municipalities and counties to do abatement actions. Basically, the amendment just clarified the appeal process for anyone who's been impacted by such a decision and it's going to be de novo instead of by direct appeal. We just need to amend our ordinance to be consistent with state law, so staff is recommending approval of this ordinance amendment.
All right, we will take a motion to approve that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter one-oh-four Derelict Property of the Bryan County Code, of the Bryan Code of Ordinances.
Second. Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. That motion carries, thank you. Okay, we're down to Mr. Taylor, County Administrator, some housekeeping things.
Item one on the agenda is Motorola radio upgrade for Sheriff's Office. Sheriff is requesting upgrade a hundred and eight radios for Motorola. Total cost is six hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and ninety-five cents and it's going to be financed over seven years. This is a budgeted item, two thousand twenty-three budget. This is a sole source purchase from Motorola since all the other equipment is Motorola. Our recommendation is authorized as chairman, sheriff, or county administrator to sign any paperwork necessary to execute contract in Motorola.
Any questions? Okay, we need a motion on that one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the chairman, sheriff, and/or county administrator to sign any paperwork necessary to execute the contract with Motorola pending final changes to the terms and conditions in the contract by the county attorney.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, next up is a twenty-twenty-three rolling mowing contract, right away?
Yeah, this is consideration of the award of two thousand twenty-three right-of-way mowing contract of service land management. Service land manager was contacted and bid out and staff has recommended the award of the contract of service land management based out of Collins, Georgia, an amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-four-hundred dollars annually for the listed right-of-way mowing service.
Okay, we need a motion for that one.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve of staff to award a contract of service land management based out of Collins in an amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-four-hundred dollars.
Second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, motion carries. Next up is the First Lady Kitchen LLC contract for concessions.
Item three is the consideration of First Lady Kitchen's LLC's contract extension. Staff did an RFP parts and recreations concession services back in two thousand twenty and had a trial period of six months for that contract. That period is over, staff and customer seems happy with the service, food quality, so staff would like to extend that contract to one year until March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Recommendation is authorize staff to award this one-year contract amendment to First Lady Kitchen LLC.
Okay, any motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to authorize staff to award a one-year contract amendment to First Lady Kitchen LLC.
Second. Second. Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Does this include Hendrick's Park at this point?
This does include Hendrick's Park.
You say it does?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. Item four, vehicle transfers, the four-H, the four-H program?
Item four is transfer of vehicles to UGA Extension Program. The UAGA Extension Program is funded and budgeted by Bryan County, which includes providing transportation of vehicles. Staff, in order to mitigate liabilities, the county selects to transfer a passenger van, transportation for kids, to events and a pickup truck for the UGA Extension Agent. Our recommendation is authorize staff, or staff, to sign any paperwork necessary to execute the transfer of the vehicles to the UGA Extension Program pending legal review of the documents by the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the chairman and/or the county administrator to assign any paperwork, to sign any paperwork necessary to execute the transfer of vehicles to the UGA Extension Program pending legal review of the documents by the county attorney.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. We're down to the Richmond Hill Soccer Club contract.
Item five is to consider the approval of facilities usage agreement with Richmond Hill Soccer Club's recreational program between Bryan County and the Soccer Club. They're a nonprofit organization that's been organizing soccer in Bryan County for more than twenty years. They operate on the umbrella of the Georgia Soccer Association, which is state affiliated to the United States Soccer Federation, which provides licensing courses for coaches, certification for coaches and referees. The club operates or offers recreational academy and select levels of soccer in Bryan County. This club has provided recreational soccer program at Vol Henderson Park for Bryan County Parks and Recreation for many years, twenty years to be exact, and the agreement not only solidifies the relationship between Bryan County and the club, but it also clearly finds the expectations of each party to the agreement. A six-month MOU was approved by the Board of Commissioners back in September of twenty-twenty-two. Currently, the agreement currently under consideration for approval of a one-year contract with the option to renew annually for up to four years. Our recommendation is to approve the facilities uses agreement for the Richmond Hill Soccer Club's recreational program between Bryan County and the Soccer Club to provide recreational soccer program for Bryan County Parks and Recreation Department.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between Bryan County and Richmond Hill Soccer Club to provide recreational soccer programming for the Bryan County Parks and Recreation Department.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, that motion carries. All right, down to the Megasite Regional Water and Sewer Improvement Bids Award.
Item six, Megasite Regional Water and Sewer Improvements in conjunction with the State of Georgia Savannah Harbor Interstate Sixteen Quarter Joint Development Authority. Bryan County is committed to design permitting and construction of on-site water and sewer improvements to serve Hyundai. Bryan County engaged Thomason Hutton Engineering to design permit and permit the Megasite Regional Pump Station Forest Main, Water Main, Gravity Sewer, TNX Prepare Contract Bid Documents, Associated Plans for Construction of BCMS Regional Pump Station Forest Main, Water Main, and Gravity Sewer upon the approval of documents. The project was advertised for its construction bids. Bids were received for the project February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three and evaluated by Thomason Hutton. Two bids were received and evaluated. Thomason Hutton has prepared, attached a letter of recommendation in your packet and that recommendation is the award of construction contract for this project in the amount totaling a little over thirty-eight million dollars and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents in order to initiate the project. The McLendon Enterprises is, is the company to be awarded to, should so achieved.
All right, we need a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to award construction contract for the Bryan County Megasite Regional Pump Station Forest Main, Water Main, and Gravity Sewer to McLendon Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of thirty-eight million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-five cent and authorize staff to execute the necessary contract documents to initiate the project.
I'll second that. Second, any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, that motion carries, thank you. All right, down to number seven, the IGA with the City of Pembroke for Fire Services.
Item seven is a Bryan County City of Pembroke Mutual Aid Agreement. In an effort to reduce emergency response times for citizens along Bryan County and the City of Pembroke, the proposed mutual aid agreement is presented because the neighboring department may have a fire station closest to the location of call. This agreement ensures that all citizens can expect a timely response for medical or other emergencies. Our recommendation is author, authorize the chairman to execute Bryan County City of Pembroke Mutual Aid Agreement as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion authorizing the chairman to execute Bryan County City of Pembroke Mutual Aid Agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, that motion carries. All right, down to number eight, the MOU with the Atlanta Humane Society Grant Award.
Item eight is a considered approval of MOU between Bryan County and Atlanta Humane Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Incorporated. Bryan County Animal Control applied for a capital improvement grant with the Atlanta Humane Society out of twenty-five funds across state. BCAC was selected as a recipient for an approximate twenty-five thousand dollar grant. This is going to be used to renovate the kennels, also the floors as well in the Richmond Hill Animal Shelter. So staff applied for this grant, they got it, they did a great job getting it and we'd recommend that you authorize appropriate staff to execute the MOU between Bryan County and the Atlanta Humane Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals for this purpose.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion authorizing the appropriate staff to execute the memorandum of understanding between Bryan County and Atlanta Humane Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Inc. for the purpose of providing shelter consultation services and distribution of funds for capital improvement.
I'll second. Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, down next to the TNX Task Order ninety-two, Highway two-eighty Utility Relocations Engineering Services.
Item nine, another Megasite related project, Highway, Highway two-eighty Utility Relocations Engineering Services. In conjunction with GDOT, the Georgia Department of Transportation, Bryan County is committed to design permitting, construction of water and sewer, relocations near the intersection of two-eighty Oracle Parkway and Interstate Center Boulevard. The proposed task order includes planning, designing, permitting, bidding, construction phase services for US Highway two-eighty Utility Relocations. This project includes relocations of eight-inch Gravity Sewer Main, twelve-inch Water Main, six-inch Forest Main outside of the future GDOT roundabout. Thomason Hutton has exclusive expertise and institutional knowledge linked directly to the Interstate Center development and of Bryan County's regional infrastructure planning for all North Bryan County. Their prior work on the project, coordination with GDOT and GDOT's engineers, expansion is done a base of survey, previous design and planning, planning efforts makes them uniquely capable of providing this required engineering service. Given the critical nature of the project, Norfolk County meets its commitments regarding relocation of water and sewer utilities prior to GDOT's construction of a new interchange, it's imperative that Thomason Hutton continue to provide the necessary engineering services for the project without interruption. Our recommendation is to approve the attached Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the chairman to execute corresponding task order number ninety-two in the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars for Highway two-eighty Utility Relocation Engineering Services.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Thomason Hutton Scope of Services and authorize the chairman to execute corresponding task order number ninety-two in the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars for Highway two-eighty Utility Relocations Engineering Services.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
One, one question. This is reimbursable by the state or this is not?
This is reimbursable by the state.
So this, this amount including the cost to relocate the utilities will be reimbursed?
Reimbursed.
By the state?
By the state.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, down to number ten, our GDOT Utility Relocation MOU.
Item ten is related to item nine, of course, because this is the actual MOU with GDOT. This, GDOT's requesting Bryan County design and permit and construct the necessary relocations ahead of road improvements and GDOT will pay a hundred percent of the cost via reimbursement. The memorandum of understanding sets the base of that agreement. Our recommendation is consider the approval of the MOU with Georgia Department of Transportation, authorize staff to execute the necessary documents in order to initiate the project.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution, oh, sorry, wrong item. I make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Georgia Department of Transportation and authorize staff to execute the necessary documents to initiate the project.
Second. Second, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. All right, down to number eleven, resolution establishing the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Bryan County.
Item eleven is a resolution establishing an urban redevelopment agency of Bryan County in preparation for a CDBG application in order to obtain the greatest opportunity for that award and other projects. The county needs to submit a redevelopment area strategy to DCA, which requires establishing an urban redevelopment agency. State law provides for it. This resolution will follow state law. Our recommendation is the approval of a resolution establishing Urban Redevelopment Agency of Bryan County.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution establishing the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Bryan County.
Second. Second, discussion on that? All in favor say aye. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. Down to number twelve, the Urban Redevelopment Agency Committee Appointments.
Item six, or item twelve is, relates to item eleven, that's the appointment of the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Bryan County. Upon establishment of this agency, it's going to need its members, so this resolution is actually appointing the county commission as the, the board of the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Bryan County.
Okay. Motion on item twelve.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a resolution appointing the six county commissioners as the board of commissioners for the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Bryan County.
Second. Second, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye. All opposed, okay, that motion carries. Down to item number thirteen.
Item thirteen is the approval of Belfort Tornado rebuilding contracts, of course, April fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Had a devastating F-four tornado hit Bryan County, which affected almost all of our facilities in the northern part of the county. These two contracts have been negotiated and agreed upon by the county of Belfort and ACC Insurance. They referred to actual wiring within the courthouse and the administration building for computers and other, other such technology, which was exposed to the elements. This recommendation is approve staff to sign two Belfort contracts in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety cents, allowing Belfort to continue its rebuilding efforts with Bryan County's critical facilities.
Okay, we need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion approving staff to sign two Belfort contracts in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety cent, allowing, allowing Belfort to continue rebuilding Bryan County's facilities.
Second. Second, okay, any discussion on that?
Yeah, I just want to point out to, to everybody that's here tonight that, you know, that happened April the fifth last year. We are nearly a year away from that date and we are still signing contracts, still negotiating to get Bryan County restored. It's not been a easy process or, and it's not been a fast process at all, but staff has worked very hard to make sure that Bryan County is getting what we have been insured for, for years. So I just want to say kudos to staff and use that opportunity to point out how long it's been, but also how hard staff has worked.
Yeah, it's about eighteen million dollars worth. Yeah, it's about eighteen million dollars worth of damages, and it's the largest ACCG insurance claim in the history of that insurance pool.
I guess what I was saying with that was, thank you.
Thank you, and thank y'all for your patience too, the folks that are up here waiting on it to get done. Alright, with that, anybody else? That being said, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, okay, that motion carries, thank you. Lori, we'll take public comments, is there a sign and sheet? If anybody has any public comments? And while we're getting this, if, the first three items of our meeting were deferred until May. If anybody's here, I saw some folks coming in, if anybody's here to speak on those items, we'll take your comments, but that, those items have been deferred. Is there anybody here? Okay, alright, thank you. Alright.
Could I make a favor part of the one more item that concerns this?
Okay. If you'll state your name for the record again.
My name is Mr. Wilson, Rick Wilson, I live at four forty-five Deer Run Road in Blitston, which is now known as Elabel. Also, with the recent industrial growth, the people of the community as well as my neighbors and other people have had to suffer with dust that is unrelentless. Most job sites require, on small job sites require water trucks to be ran on a regular basis. As everyone knows, you could barely see to even drive down sixteen, it's been so horrific. With the other job sites, that's coming about at the end of the road, that's also a problem. This end of the county, unlike the south end, this end becomes quite dusty during the summertime. I grew up here. Also, last but not least, it concerns our wildlife. I would like to see proper storm erosion implied for the Hyundai. It is an embarrassment to myself, as well as to others, that you can drive down the side of I sixteen, there's no silt fence preventing water runoff into the Agitchi River, one of the last cleanest rivers that we have here in the state of Georgia. There should be silt fence in place, and there is none. And I would like to see the board if they could implement that to our own coming other, and not only to Hyundai plant to address them, but to also imply it as well to our other industrial people that, with the growth that we're having here, to please put in place proper storm erosion so that we do not have runoff into our ditches and creeks and streams. Any creeks or streams or ditches that lead into our rivers are considered state waters, and we want to keep them clean for our future generations. Thank you.
And the dust up there is being, it is being addressed, and I think for silt fence, that's probably part of our code.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to address, I, I, I would like to know whether it's not silt fence, because I'm pretty positive that there's silt fence all the way around that site.
That's what I was.
Secondly, secondly, I know that there's seventeen water trucks run out there. Thirdly, I've been in meetings where I've, where I've seen the county threaten to shut down, and I know that the site's been shut down on different days in order to help control dust. I know that they consistently preach and, and are looking to enforce a ten mile an hour speed limit in an effort to keep the dust down. I'm not saying that it's not dusty, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that we recognize that it's dusty, but that we, the, the things that you have stated, I know that the county, I know the county staff, I know that we have hired a person that is on-site all the time on that mega site, that's a Bryan County employee as an inspector, and I know that they work very hard to make sure that what you just said is taken care of. And I believe, and I'll find out, but I believe that the silt fence and erosion control is completely satisfied to the best that it can be. But I will address that.
Yes, if you'll take notice right beside I sixteen where it starts to go over to the river, there is a dirt area there, there is no silt fence been there, and I have reported it to the state. And, because I love the river and I love my home here in Bryan County, I grew up here. And I'd like to see it here still for further generations. As far as the water trucks, we're eating dust at my house on four forty-five Deer Run Road. As you well know, that's close by, but maybe someone could hear like you do for open burns. On certain days, the state does not approve burns that take place due to wind. On windyier days, maybe there might be some compensation made with extra water trucks. I'm not saying by no means shut down the job site, but maybe some extra things could be taken and implemented in place to help knock down the dust. That's, like you said, the, the speed limit as well. But thank you for your time, I don't want to take up any more of the board's time.
Thank you.
Alright, we have up first for public comment, and I know I can't really read the name, I believe it's F O R. Oh, F O R, okay. Okay, no, you, okay, we'll, yeah, okay, and then Bradley Maury. You've come up, we'll give you four minutes, and thank you again for saying amplification also.
Thank you.
He was responsible for giving every, all of his up here Bible, which we need sometimes, so thank you for that too, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
More often than not, yeah.
You know, I think all this really goes, they, none of us really like what's happening now. We can't adjust like we think we ought to be able to adjust. But I think that we need to look at it in a little different perspective. You think about all the Korean people that are coming in here. They're gonna feel like that they're not welcome here because we all, we can't get it terms of ourself. We can't live with each other in a peaceful manner. This is sure not like love thy neighbor as thyself. I think a lot of it stems our part, not asking when we ought to be asking. And I think another thing lies on the commissioners themselves, not explaining why you do certain things that you do, and how it impacts them. But, I don't, I'm not up here to complain about anything. I'm glad to live in Bryan County, and I'm excited to see the changes that's being made. And I look at it on a positive note where if I sell my property and I get what it's really worth, I can reinvest back into my community and really make a difference in what's happening right now. But you think about this, if we can get some help from the state and from federal for interstructure, building what we need built here, all the sewage system and, all that, interstructure. I think we really need to get help from the state, because this thing's moving faster than we all thought it was gonna move. And it is getting difficult to live where we live. But there's a, a way to get a lot of these problems solved. Where we lived on Deer Run is you won't be able to get out on two eighty. You can forget about that in the future. That road can be cut through to Industrial Park Road on most, any of our properties on the side that the industrial park's on. And it also, at the end of Deer Run, it can be run all, all the way out to Highway eighty that way from those warehouses feeding on to Highway eighty. So, there is a solving prob, I mean, there's a problem that can be solved just by reconstructing a few things. But I don't think I want to live there with a constant noise. And you, at night, sometimes it scares you half to death when one of those tires blows out over there at Love Truck Stop, it's kind of frightening. But I just want to say this, I think we can all get together and we can, if we had meetings with the commissioners and y'all explain to us what's going on and what we can do about being a, a part of it. You think about it like this, all of our heads is, you can get a lot of input more than just six heads. You think about it, they always say two heads is better than one. We can give a lot of input to you of way we feel, and then you can understand how we feel by the decisions that's being made. That's all I want to say. I want to see a mission put here for the Korean people that's coming in here. Because everybody's got soul, and I think we need to have, be concerned about our neighbors, love our neighbor as we do ourself. And then everything else will fall in line. Put God first in our life, and then everything else will line up. But that's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir.
We'll see.
I, I will tell you so you know, the state and the federal have put hundreds of millions of dollars into this project. So, hey, yeah, we couldn't, we couldn't do this Bryan County.
Well, I'm sure they.
That's right, so yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, we have Dee Dee Williams. She's already spoke, okay, is this Patricia Wilson?
Yeah, I'm there too.
Okay, you already spoke to?
Yeah, I did earlier.
Okay, and then, is that Kelly? Is that?
Holly Young.
Holly, excuse me, Holly Young, sorry about that. I have to tell them every time somebody comes in, they had to put, print, please print.
That's alright.
If you'll state your name for the record, we can do five minutes.
I'm Holly Young, I just want to tell you how much we appreciate you guys sitting at this board and that some of you have been open-minded enough to listen to the concerns that these residents have had and what they're dealing with. And I appreciate the thought that you are revisiting this comprehensive plan, and hopefully this will work in their favor. I think it's been an extremely hard task for you guys sitting back there, there's a lot going on here, and we just appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we do appreciate that, it is, it, you know, it's a work, it's, I mean, it's, it's to the staff, right? They, they've done a tremendous amount of work, they bring it to us to, to vote on it, but behind the scenes, they are overwhelmed every day, and that comp plan is, it's a living document, it changes all the time. And again, thank you for that, and thank you to our staff to continually working on those things. Alright, we are down to our, any more public comments? Do you want to make a public comment?
I would like to do an introduction if you'd be willing.
Okay, this is Audra.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have Richard Frazier from Charles Abbott Associates and Danny, and I can't remember his last name. I just wanted to introduce them because they are, Richard is the person on-site, you may hear his name. I'd like the public to also see his face, that yes, we do have representation out on the mega site.
You sure you want to show your face?
Yes, out on the mega site.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to put a face with a name for y'all.
Thank you, thank you, Richard, for all your work out there too, it's, it's a daunting task, we all know it, so.
Yes, would we like an update?
Yes, please, so I didn't hear that. I am deaf and blind. So, if you didn't hear, he, he's gonna give us an update on the mega site, what's going on over there. So, good, appreciate it, Richard, thank you.
My name's Richard Frazier with Charles Abbott, thank you for having me here. As of right now, today, we permitted the first vertical building. We've got five foundations going, six, seven foundations going. We, the paint building is the flagship of the building. We gave them a conditional approval so they can start hanging steel. They've got the P one, P I P one to P I P thirteen, which will be the first part of the building put up. As far as the dust, they are, it's a, there's a lot of moving parts. They have fifteen water trucks running from three o'clock to eight o'clock at night. Silt fence is up, we do walk that weekly. I work with Kurt, he's the main engineer out there, so I do, I do his enforcement out there as of right now. We have, Glovis has submitted their foundation only plans, Hyundai Transit has submitted theirs and their verticals. We have the first flex building going up, which is the HEA office building, temporary office building. You'll see it, looks like a spaceship at the, at the end of the, from I sixteen, you could see it. They got a forty-five hundred square foot canteen going up right now. We're in the middle of doing a plan review for the fifteen thousand square foot HMGA office building, which is temporary. So, it's gonna go up, it's a foundation building that'll go up, and then come back down when they build the corporate office. Movis has submitted their flex building, so down the road, right down the road, closer to the pond, as we call it, you'll see their flex building going up. They'll have three flex buildings going up, same style. But as of right now, that's where we're at. And foundations have started for welding, assembly, still start arriving Thursday. So, they'll start erecting steel next week for the first part of the paint building.
It's amazing. Anybody have any questions for him?
Could you comment a little bit on, I know as you go down I sixteen, near that cell tower, there's a lot of water ponded up there. I know that's not permanent, but can you maybe just comment for the public's sake?
Alright, that DOT opened up some beaver dams on the opposite side. So, that water flows that way down I sixteen. That is where, since there is no water on that site, that is where the water trucks are pumping water to keep the site down. There, all the stockpiles have been mulched. Again, we're, you know, it's a slow process of trying to get everybody on the same page. There's multiple moving parts. That water will eventually dry up, there's a master plan where there will be a pond right there, but that's really just water right now that's coming from de-watering the site, you know, from where they're digging ACPs and RIs, which are rigid inclusion auger cast piles.
Thank you. And that, that canteen is gonna serve the wor, is that?
That's, that's strictly gonna serve HEA, their, their workforce there. There's no cooking in there, they bring everything in. They actually have a contract with Benon, Benal Korean BBQ, so they come and feed them every day. Same thing with Movis, they'll have a canteen there, but no cooking will be going, going on there.
Okay.
They're, they're looking, I got the word yesterday, they're looking at bringing a full subsidized kitchen in there to feed two thousand people, but there is no, the city thing can't handle it.
Right, okay.
Those canteens are temporary along with the?
They're temporary. They're, they're flexible buildings that are basically manufactured conxes that are built, they bolt them together, they, they, they attach them to the ground with augers. So, they're, you know, pretty nice.
Alright, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Anybody else have any comments?
It would be nice if at every meeting we could get an update from him, I thought, I thought that was.
How about on this end? So, he doesn't have to rush you the other end.
Yeah, we can, we can arrange it.
Okay.
Even if he does it on a Zoom.
Okay.
I mean, but I think it's great to have that.
Things are moving so fast out there, you want a monthly update, not every two months.
Could you just state your name, sir?
Alright, thank you, I'm Mike Holken. I did, I've heard a different one in the back talking about Deer Run between two eighty and sixteen eighty. Oh, y'all planning on making that industrial Deer Run all the way through there, what's y'all's plan? The land.
Those are private properties?
Yeah.
If they come and want to get it rezoned, we will consider it being, to be rezoned. We don't, we can't, we won't do, we can't do it ourselves.
Well, what I'm saying, if you had a list of the people on that road, and down Deer Road, if you had a list of everybody, said they want it industrial, would y'all consider doing it?
They would come individually and go through the process?
It would have to be individually? Okay.
Yes, sir.
And there's a lot of people, I had, I live right there on two eighty, the other morning, I had to get out. And my granddaughter, hadn't been too long, but when you get off, you know, sixteen or two eighty, you know, on the east, she had a bad wreck down here on traffic. And the other morning, it was so bad, I had to get out, and I had a man that jumped all up there, and I did. She, I was behind her, I said, I'm not gonna sit here and wait, she had the wreck right in front of me. I stopped the traffic, I had a man that said, you know, you get rode up for that. I really didn't care, I'm thinking about my granddaughter, had long ago, almost got killed. And, um, it's bad right there, I know, we lived there, we fought. We felt a bit more about it, but I hear people all up there in front of me said, what they're going to do, what they're going to do. And, um, we can't do nothing unless y'all make the move. But if you say, it, it had to be individually, if you had a list, everybody on that road and said, we ready to get something on, you know, I hear some people say, well, we, they want a commercial. You know, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
I want to get out there before they put the four lane there. And, um, you know, all that's going on. And it's not, you'll get, when they first started a few years ago, they said it'd be like a little piece of pie. And then I said, no, it ain't going to be like a piece of pie. This will be a big thing for it to break. Look, and we see it happening. And, um, I don't want to smite, we keep getting shoved. Between me, they got a big warehouse they building, that's another lady sitting here, her land than a thowery. And a lot, y'all, we get shoved gradually, get pushed out. And, um, we like to know, you know, I don't want to wait until I get hemmed in. And, um, you know, when you get warehouse on either side, ain't nobody going to live where you at. You know, and, um, we did like, if, if y'all do that, if it takes individually of us trying to give y'all something, we'll do it. But I thought would be a lot easier, we got a list of everybody on that road, Deer Run, everybody, everybody ready to make a move.
Yes, we've heard, we've heard from many people about that.
Alright, so other, tell them what we need to do. Tell them, they, y'all about that talking.
Yes, sir.
They want to know what to do. So if y'all don't mind, tell us what to do.
Well, they can cut, individually, if you want to rezone your property, just go through the process and rezone your property. That's, that's what you need to do.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I address a little bit of this? So, so I, so I just want to, I've spoken to several members who live out in that area. And this, this is what, you know, I had told y'all that we had hoped to do a commissioner-initiated rezoning. That, that is not going to happen, okay? So not in that format. We have brought that back. We've, we've researched it and it's not what's best for Bryan County. Now, what, we are going to address the area in the comprehensive land use plan. That, that will be completed, we'll basically know, hopefully by, I think, the end of May, early June, what that'll look like for the comprehensive land use plan. So there's two parts to it. There's the comprehensive land use plan and then there's the rezoning. But what we would recommend at this point is that each individual that wants to be rezoned to go to planning and zoning and fill out the request to rezone your parcel of property. That way, if there's someone in the back who doesn't want it and they don't request it, then they're not going to have to be rezoned, right? I mean, it's only if you want it and, and understand every reason why you would want it.
Yeah.
But I think, I would just say to the, to the group that's here, that I have misspoke to you. And if I have done that, I would apologize. I'm, I'm sorry. But that's not what's in the best interest of Bryan County, to do a commissioner-initiated rezoning. The best interest of Bryan County is, is to go about this process like we're, like we're attempting to do, which is each individual to do this, right? And so that is, I think, at this point, the best information I can give you. I know that we are going into a retreat in the upcoming week and we, I, I would hope that we can come back with something that we could get to a few of you residents who could pass around and say, this is the exact process to follow. This is, this, this is going to make it as easy as possible, when you know and what the process is. Because as individuals, it's, it's very difficult for me as an individual. It's a lot easier for me to go hire some engineering firm and, and have them do it, but me as an individual, I can't afford to do that.
Well, you all understand what I'm saying, don't you?
Yes, sir.
We still got like, watch that, watch that, you know?
Right.
And, um, I'm ready to get out there for a year.
And I think, just to back up what Noah said, I think you need to get that paperwork and get it started filing that as quickly as you can get those forms. Audra and Amanda's department, you can get those forms online. You can go by their office and pick them up. But you need to get that paperwork turned in because it's a process, you know? And it would be great if we could just say, it's all rezoned, but, but we can't do that. We'd be violating laws that we can't do.
I understand it, but I did, we, we feel like we don't know what's next. And we don't really.
But I don't think anybody up here...
We had y'all's mercy and y'all had somebody else's mercy, I'm sure. But I did, um, if that's what it takes, at least we know, you know, what we need to do. And I ain't trying to be smart or nothing, but the bottom line with it, I like to know, you know? I want to get out there for all the big stuff that gets there.
I have a question. I have a hard time walking, so I just can't stand my ears. I live on Deer Run Road and there's nobody probably in this county that enjoys, enjoyed where they live even more than I did. But there come, my son was killed not even a half a mile from my house. My husband died in our house, but there comes a time when it's time to go. And if we just sit there and live in this misery that we're in, what can we expect? Are they going to come in one day and say, okay, well, you all have to get out of here? Or, or are they going to give us an opportunity to go and have our property rezoned? What if I have my property rezoned and everybody else in my neighborhood wants their property rezoned except the person right next door to me? Then what's going to happen? Can y'all answer that question for me?
Well, I think it's up to each individual what they want to do with their property.
I know that, that's not what I'm saying.
And that, that's a problem with rezoning everything is we can't because you have a neighbor that may not want to do it. I think you, if you rezone your property, I think each individual property owner is going to be responsible for doing that.
But they can't, they can't go in there unless all those properties are sold. I mean, they can't go in there as an industrial park. They behind us, in front of us. They right at our doors, on both sides. They got us wedged in there. We can't do anything. We can't go anywhere. And they, they've got, if they want to build, they got to go across us, all of us.
Once again, like I say, it is a misery. The school bus can't make a left-hand turn onto Deer Run Road coming from the school. They've been hit three times. The school bus has been hit three times in the last year. My granddaughter's 10 years old. Thankfully, she got the tag number. Who, who at 10 years old thinks that? She got the tag number and the color of the car the last time. But they've been hit three times. They can't make a left-hand turn. My grandchildren have to ride the bus an hour and a half longer than their stop. I started out on Deer Run Road the other morning, looked both ways, had it both ways, and all of a sudden, somebody passes somebody that they think is going too slow. Had I pulled out, I wouldn't be here. It's dangerous. It's dangerous.
I have one question. Since you're updating this comprehensive plan, do you recommend that they wait till that plan is updated before they put in these applications? Or is it okay for them to?
I would go ahead and put in the applications.
So you're okay to do that?
Yes.
I would recommend that they do that.
Alright, and the second question I have is, we talked about property taxes. Is there going to be any reprieve for these people who do rezon until the use changes on their property? Are they going to be elevating their property taxes to a higher number if they get the industrial zone? Or is there some way to address some factor to give them a safety net until the use changes?
I think that's beyond the commission.
Yeah, I think that, our county attorney can kind of address that if he'd like to. I don't think, until they reassess, but I mean, yeah, Caroline Holman, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. So the tax assessors assess the property values and based on that assessment, how the tax gets determined on an angle-like basis. Once it gets rezoned, however the tax assessor determine the value of that property as zoned will be what the tax is based off of. We can't, the commission can't give you a tax reprieve or a rebate under this process.
So the, there's a person who's already, has their property, has not been rezoned yet. But I understand that their taxes are already increased because their neighbor sold theirs and it's a free zone. And even though they're residential, they're getting that impact.
I think everyone's taxes have gone up recently. I don't know that that would be...
This is horrific, like a horrific increase.
Well, I think it's important that, again, that, that is not, that's the tax commissioner.
And we need to get the tax assessment.
Yeah, the tax assessor.
Tax assessor.
There is, there's a process by which you can challenge the assessment once that assessment comes. You get a notice first, there's a process by which you can challenge that, but that doesn't go to this board. That goes to a separate board.
Right, and there's no assurance that that can be, be held or called back. And that's up to the board.
Well, you do have a legal right and assurance to proceed the process.
Right.
But we can't guarantee what the outcomes of that process would be because that's for other people to decide.
That's right. Alright. Let, let me ask you one question. If, if we, if we do all this, if we go ahead and fill out all the paperwork and everything we need to fill out, can this be brought up at the next meeting that we have?
No, sir. It's, it's a, it's a process. I think it has to be public, uh, uh, public notice. And so it's a process. That's why you just...
What I understand, Sam, about a three month?
Yeah, because you're going to have two reads plus the planning zone.
Yes.
Somebody turn in papers tomorrow. When we're taking in the, in our, our meeting for us to...
Well, so, uh, colleagues, I don't have our deadline schedule in front of us, but we do post a deadline schedule on our website. And if an application is submitted by a certain deadline, and it's usually about 45 days out, then it would be scheduled for the first meeting with the Board of Commissioners. But generally, we are looking at a two to three month process. And I can tell you that we have probably already passed the deadline for your next meeting. So at the earliest, we wouldn't be looking to see anything on an agenda to start discussion of it until, um, we would be looking at the main meeting at the earliest.
Can I add something or ask something?
Yes.
So when you say, we need the paperwork or get the paperwork started, you are saying that we would need to turn in a memorization form, property owner form, a disclosure statement of taxes, the development of a regional impact plan, rezoning criteria, boundary survey, recorded plot showing the acreage to be rezoned and a concept plan prepared in accordance to checklist requirements.
I, I think the best thing to do with that...
That, that's why I'm bringing this up. That's difficult.
I think the best thing to do with that i- is call the planning and zoning and have them let you know exactly what forms you need to fill out. Because we, I, we, I don't know it off the top of my head. They, they'll, they could, they'll walk you through that process, right?
Well, I mean, if they ask for a traffic, if you guys ask for a traffic impact survey or something like that, how is us as property owners going to do something like that? And then we don't have the money to pay somebody to do this and we don't, we haven't approached, have anyone approached us because we don't have 100 plus acres. We're, you know, probably five acres, four acres, three acres, two acres. Nobody wants to do that. But if we group all together and do it, somebody will buy it. But there's just no one out there that's going to buy five acres.
And I don't believe you have to do all that just to rezone your property. I think if you're going to...
If you want to rezone that heavy industrial...
I think the best thing to do i- is get with them and, and ask Audra, I mean, would that be Audra or Amanda? Just to kind of walk them through the process. I, yeah, because we, we, we don't want it to be complicated.
Let's address, let's address a remedy to this in our retreat on Sunday. And, and we'll, we'll make a decision and let's put something out on Facebook or the website.
You are asking about rezoning right now. How many people?
So that, that's, I, I think Commissioner Daniels had a good idea. We'll, we can address it and maybe have somebody get with one of y'all to kind of say, hey...
Yeah, if we, if we'll, we'll consider, it could be something in assembly is having a rezoning workshop that we can make Ms. Amanda available and so we can go through some of that. So let's, we're, we're having this retreat on Sunday through Tuesday and we'll publicize something and we can get to agreement.
I work, I'm, I'm, I'm an instructor. That's what I do. I teach. So if you guys are willing to do something like that, I am willing to help you guys.
Well, we, we, we are talking about a retreat, a commissioner's retreat, not...
No, no, I'm not talking about your retreat. I'm talking about a workshop. If you guys are willing to put on a workshop, then I'm willing to help any of the community with rezoning process. I mean, because this is...
Real quick, I just want everybody to know, we are here to help you guys, okay? Like, this, this doesn't need to be, you know...
Something that feels overwhelming, so if that is...
I, I understand, understand and, and...
And the, the goal of this body is to help Bryan County, right? We want to make sure that you guys feel represented by us, your, 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 your county commissioners, right? So we're, we're here to represent you.
It's really difficult because I have, I have gone and I've met with, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, Amanda. Amanda, I am so sorry. I'm, please forgive me. And I've met, and like, one of the things that was brought up, well, you know, if you have five acres, I don't know if we want to rezon that because if you rezon it heavy industrial, they're just going to want to put, you know, uh, containers on the property.
These are things that historically have been set up to protect the residents of Bryan County, right? From, you know, so, so we now find ourselves in a unique circumstance where, you know, multiple...
People are impacted by these decisions and, and we want to do the right thing and make sure that we help you guys and protect the future as, as well. So let us get it right and I promise you, we'll come back and we'll get it right.
Mr. Wilson at 445 Deer Run Road, once again, as my neighbor was saying, she had her child injured and her husband. I have my grandson, is actually one week ago hit by the truck in a Volkswagen right there. I would like to ask the board if there might be a way to prevent further injury or to anyone, children or bus drivers or anyone else, if there may be some way temporarily that we could place an officer to help the people get in and out of the road in the morning times and to help our buses get in and out so that the bus drivers do not get ran over. Uh, because it's unfortunate, they, the trucks will take the ride away from them. And, uh, we, none of us want to see any, anyone's children hurt. Uh, my grandson was on his way to college and a truck hit him and, and the driver didn't mean to, but it's, they, they can't stop. We had a problem quite often with dump trucks and big trucks and trains. They cannot stop on a dime.
And, uh... Yeah, we will, we'll, we can, I can address that with the sheriff.
Yeah.
He would have something. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, we will, we don't have any...
I have a question. If, if your neighbor decides to do theirs as, as a industrial and you, you do not want to say... Does that mean you're going to have to pay taxes on industrial?
No, ma'am.
The tax goes to the tax assessor and if you get a tax bill that you think's too high, you can, you have the ability to go back and ask the assessor to look at it again.
Oh, yeah, but I, that didn't answer my question. I said, if my neighbor... Has theirs rezoned as industrial and I don't, do I have to pay industrial tax?
No, ma'am.
And that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
There's no executive session tonight? Okay. Alright, so we will, we will take a motion to close our meeting.
Motion to close the meeting.
Excuse me?
Have a question, please?
Yes.
Oh, I might have got here late. My name's Jason Foran. We own a property that I got a letter saying we were going to get, it was going to be condemned tonight. Y'all can do a motion to condemn it. Is that correct?
That's in Effingham County?
Yes, sir.
That's at our next meeting. If you would like to speak on that, you're welcome to. We're going to close this meeting and open up another meeting.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Second meeting, that's okay. That's okay. Alright, do we have a motion to close this meeting?
Motion adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Yeah, and we're going to have a second meeting on a property over in Effingham County. Anybody would like to stay? Alright. In Bryan County.
Yes, sir. One is killer. I love her.
Two in Effingham, one in Bryan.
I don't miss going to work, but I miss working with her. So I heard it's like...
That's against Michael and believes when he got hit with a bolt, boy, he probably... We do any technical sessions, because they're...
We doing any technical sessions, considering personnel?
We're trying every way we can.
I could tell.
We're going to go ahead and call our second meeting to order for Bryan County Board of Commissions for March 14th. First up, it's going to be county administrator items. Ben, you want to go through these county administrator items?
Mr. Chairman, we have a brief executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Yes. Okay. We'll take a motion, go into executive session. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session for the purpose of pending litigation.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll be right back to get that. We're going to go ahead and call our second meeting to order for Bryan County Board of Commissions
All right, we ready to get started back? Thank y'all for waiting around, everybody. Uh, our county administrator is up first with our three items.
We've got three items. Uh, what you want, would you like me to run through all of these and then vote?
Yeah, let's just go through them all and then we'll come back and vote.
Item one is the consideration of resolution to condemn a property interest in tax partial zero three zero four zero zero eleven, zero three zero four zero zero one two, Effingham County, uh, partial number seven slash seven A for Bryan County, I sixteen Regional Sewer Improvements Project owner Caroline Starling, Caroline Schuman Starling, to authorize the chairman to execute documents in furtherance of the same, to authorize the county attorney to proceed with the proceedings in furtherance of the same, estimated just an equate compensation thirty five thousand one hundred dollars. That's item one. Item two is the consideration of resolution to condemn a property interest in tax partial zero three zero five zero 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 one, Effingham County, Georgia, partial number eight for Bryan County, I sixteen Regional Sewer Improvements Project owner Forehand Timber Company, to authorize the chairman to execute documents in furtherance of the same, to authorize the county attorney to proceed with the proceedings in furtherance of the same, estimated just an adequate compensation, three thousand eight hundred dollars. Item three, consideration of resolution to condemn a property interest in tax partial zero three four one dash zero eight nine, Bryan County, Georgia, partial number five for the U.S. Highway eighty Regional Sewer Improvements Project owner Cindy S. Miles and Teresa S. Rollinson, to authorize the chairman to execute documents in furtherance of the same, to authorize the county attorney to proceed with proceedings in furtherance of the same, an estimated just an adequate compensation of seventeen thousand seven hundred dollars. Those are the three items of consideration.
Okay, what we'll do, if anybody would like to get up and speak, we'll give you an opportunity to speak. Uh, we'll give you four minutes and you'll just state your name for our record and you get four minutes if you need it.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name is Forrest Floyd. I'm District One Commissioner in, uh, Effingham County. Um, my biggest concern here, I just feel like it's an overstep of, uh, your authority and there's a problem with the fact that we just have been, we don't feel like we've been communicated with. Um, we didn't find out about this till today. I know this has been an ongoing process, but, um, to find out at the last minute that Bryan County is condemning land in Effingham County, I just think is disrespectful. Um, and I, I just want to see us work together. I don't, there's no sense in going into all the details, but, uh, we've asked y'all to, to delay this so we could try to work through this. For some reason, there's this big push, uh, I heard a comment a minute ago that there's other properties that's going to probably have to be condemned. I'm curious as to why this one has to be done tonight, that this one can't be put off and let us try to handle it in Effingham County where it should be handled.
Okay. Anybody else want to comment?
Sure. My name is Tim Callanan. I'm the county manager, uh, in Effingham and I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of y'all. Um, the, um, process on, on these two particular parcels, um, were just concerning for us and, uh, if you all kind of go back to your recollection and I don't remember the exact date, but there was a similar group of properties, uh, in Effingham County, uh, that were also up for condemnation, uh, and you all, uh, decided to pull that, uh, and let the county, uh, try and, uh, work out a solution that's amicable with the property owner. Uh, and, uh, in good faith, the county did that, uh, and the IDA actually purchased those properties, uh, and then you all voted on the easement from the IDA, uh, just recently. Um, our request on this, uh, is simply because once you do a vote, uh, on a condemnation in another county, you know, it's kind of hard to get undone and it just, I think it creates a bad precedent and, um, uh, we would like the opportunity, uh, just to have a thirty day time period because we did not know, uh, obviously we knew that, uh, the negotiations were ongoing with all the property owners. Um, but our assumption was that after what had happened with the last property, we made it, uh, kind of, uh, clear that our uncomfortableness with regards to, uh, the cross, uh, cross-border condemnation, uh, that, uh, we, um, uh, that the county has an opportunity, uh, to try and rectify the situation amicably. amicably. We're requesting that, or if we can get, and I do understand that there's thirty days before a lawsuit can be filed, but what we are asking for is just to simply delay the actual vote on the condemnation, just to prevent that from actually occurring, just because we, we just think it sets a bad precedent. And it's a preference for the county itself not to have one, have one entity condemn property in theirs when the, without the county having the opportunity really to step in there and try and correct it. So all we're asking for is, is thirty days to cut, to delay this vote, give us some time to do that and then as, as you mentioned earlier, there are other properties that this has to go through and if there's any other properties that are going close to condemnation to give us the same amount of time to see if we can work something out with them. We understand we can't condemn the property on your behalf, but we can, we can negotiate with them simply like we did on the other properties to just to kind of prevent this from, from occurring. And that, and that's simply all we're asking for. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. Did anybody else make a comment?
Yes. My name is Jason Forehand. We own one of the parcels that's being condemned. Our biggest issue is we just feel like thirty-eight hundred dollars for one acre of land on I sixteen is just not enough money and we are willing to settle. But the engineer that approached me, he started off at seventeen hundred, he went to thirty-eight hundred, says it has an appraisal. I'm a real estate agent, I hadn't seen any land on I sixteen, self or anywhere around those prices. And the county attorney said he's going to send me a copy of that appraisal to review, maybe we can come to an agreement, but I just think that, you know, offering someone seventeen hundred dollars for that land upfront just started off the negotiations very poorly and maybe you should look at that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any others want to have any comment? You'll just state your name, please, ma'am.
My name is Holly Young. I'm here to represent Cindy Miles and Teresa Rollinson on their parcels. Couple of questions and also wanted to make a couple of comments. Back in two thousand and ten, their mother, Mrs. Stroud, gave the county an easement in exchange for an agreement that should water or sewer become available within ten years' time, she would be allowed to tap into the water and sewer. That timeline has expired, therefore they have never received any compensation, the family, for the first easement that was given. The first easement was just point eight four acres, so between three quarters and an acre of land of their property. And we would, you know, we've talked to, brought this to the attorney's attention this week and he's looking into that to see if anything can be done. We understand it's a separate issue than what's here before each night, but we did want to make you aware of that. In addition to that, her property is under contract. It was under contract before this easement proposal came before them. So we're having to deal with the buyer as well as, you know, looking at what's been offered here. We don't want this to cost her a sale. In addition to that, she was approached this week by the gas company wanting a third easement to her property. This may cost her her sale because now they're asking for additional properties. We had some conversation today, her son did, with the gas company and it appears that they feel like that they have, well, come back, first time they came to the county to see if it could be running the same easement, they were denied. But it seems like now that they possibly have agreed that the county will allow them to use the same easement to run the water and sewer and the gas line together there. So we again need some additional time to explore this, to be sure that that can be done. We are trying to negotiate with the attorney, but these are issues that are still unresolved tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak on this? No? Okay, we understand y'all's concerns. I mean, I, again, we've had a little conversation over here and I believe it's kind of some communication issues going on. I don't know if it's from Bryan County or Effingham County within your staff or our staff, but we will correct that moving forward because there will be others of this to happen. So tonight, we are, you are going to get an opportunity to have thirty days to look at this, a cooling off period when they vote, don't know how we're going to vote on this, but for now, we will take a vote on item one to consider the approval of the declaration of taking order resolution to condemn an improperly identified as parcel seven, seven A for I sixteen regional sewer improvements, project PI number two nine zero eight eight point zero zero zero. Any motion to approve that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the declaration of taking order and resolution to condemn property to authorize the county attorney to initiate and maintain condemnation proceedings to acquire the easement interests which are necessary for the purposes of facilitating the I sixteen regional sewer improvements, project PI number two nine zero eight eight.
Thank you. Second on that?
I'll second there.
Second on that, any discussion? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. The next one is the consider approval of declaration of taking of order and resolution to condemn property identified as parcel eight for I sixteen regional sewer improvements, project PI two nine zero eight eight. Motion for that one?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the declaration of taking order and resolution to condemn property to authorize the county attorney to initiate and maintain condemnation proceedings to acquire the easement interests which are necessary for the purpose of facilitating the I sixteen regional sewer improvements, project PI number two nine zero eight eight dash zero 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 zero.
I'll second there. Second from Commissioner Daniel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. All right, our last item is consider the approval of the declaration of taking order and resolution to condemn property identified as parcel five for the U.S. eighty regional sewer improvements, PI number two seven six nine one dash zero zero four six.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the declaration of taking order and resolution to condemn property to authorize the county attorney to initiate and maintain condemnation proceedings to acquire the easement interests which are necessary for the purposes of facilitating U.S. Highway eighty regional sewer improvements, PI number twenty-seven sixty-nine one dot zero zero forty-six.
I'll second. Second by Commissioner Daniel. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, we need a motion to close our meeting. To adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.